All right, we're going to call to order tonight's regular city commission meeting for August 2nd, 2021. Tabitha, can you give us a roll call, please?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Rattay?
Here.
President.
And we, Pastor Jordan counts is not here tonight for the invocation, so I'll give a very brief invocation. If you could all bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for the many blessings that you've given El Dorado, and we ask that you help guide this commission tonight in our decisions for the betterment of all citizens of El Dorado. And we also ask that you continue the blessings for our city, our community, as we prepare this month to get our kids back to school. This is a big month for a lot of families, and we ask that you just walk with everybody as we move forward in getting the year kicked off for our schools here in El Dorado and our youth, and keep everyone safe, and to continue to bless and keep our first responders, our police and fire, safe, and to continue to bless the city of El Dorado. In Jesus' name, amen. Would you all please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'll get my iPad turned back on. Okay, so next on the agenda is proclamations and recognitions. We don't have any proclamations tonight, is that correct, Tabitha?
Yes.
Personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Tonight, we have a personal appearance from Adams Brown LLC for our annual audit presentation.
Good evening. I'm Dana Huang. I'm the principal of Adams Brown, and this is Kayla Williams. She's the audit manager. I was in charge of the audit. We're going to go through this really fast. I know you just got it, so I put my card on there. If you have any questions after tonight, you're more than welcome to call or email me. I'd be glad to go over anything with you. So, in the packet, you're going to see, first off, a governance letter. This is just to inform you in the audit findings that we may have had, any difficulties we had with management. We also dislisted a couple audit recommendations that we had gone over with management while we were on site, so that's in there for you to go through. There's also the journal entries that we posted, or not posted, we didn't post them, we gave to Tabitha to post after the audit was complete. So those are in there for your review. And then we get into the actual comprehensive annual financial report. I am actually going to skip over the first letter, which comes from management, and turn over to page one, which is our independent auditor's report. And this is basically the most important letter in the report for you all to see. On page one, we go over what management's responsibility is, and then we go over what the auditor's responsibility is. And on page two is where we actually base our opinion on the financial statements. We are taking an unqualified opinion, which is basically stating that in all material respects, we believe that the financial statements represented fairly, and that is the highest opinion you can receive. The next several pages, pages four through 11, is the management's discussion analysis. And I highly recommend, this one can be a little overwhelming, but these pages are a very good summary of what you would get out of all of these pages. Management puts this together, and also does a comparison to the prior year, so it gives you a better idea of what actually happened compared to the past. So I highly recommend sitting down and reading those few pages. Then we get into the actual financial statements, and I'm not going to go through the numbers with, over all the numbers with you, but on page 12 is the balance sheet. And I just want to point out that each number on this balance sheet here, there's a footnote that corresponds to that number. So if you're wondering how a number is made up or where it comes from, there's a footnote that will tell you a little bit more detail about that number. On page 13, the only thing I want to point out here is you did have a positive net position, or net, as some of you may be more familiar with, of 1.8 million. And there is one other thing I want to point out on this page. We did have a prior period adjustment overall for the city of 150,000. And there is a footnote, note 13, on page 59, that will explain what that prior period adjustment was for. Along with doing the actual audit of the numbers, you also have to do a compliance audit with Kansas statutes. So on page 38, we do have a couple compliance violations that the city had at the end of the year.
I'm sorry, page 38.
38. Sorry, I'm going really fast.
No, 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 just don't hear well, sorry.
There was a deficit in net position and fund balance in the waterworks system fund, and that's because of the recording of the water storage payable. And then there was also a deficit in the construction fund. There was also a budget violation in the construction fund, and a budget violation in the Bradford Memorial Library Fund. And then we also had a compliance violation on the bonds that are required to be sent in 20 days prior to when the payment is actually due. And the state tells us that they meant that compliance amount, and they did not need that compliance. Okay, so then I'm going to skip on over. The other thing we had to do this year that you may have not had, actually you didn't have last year, was because of all of the coronavirus funds that you got, we had to do a single audit this year. You got over 750,000 in federal funds. So I'm skipping over to page 118. This is the single audit that we also did, which is internal control over financial reporting, internal control over compliance. The first report is over the financial report. We did have three significant deficiencies that we did note in there, and those are noted on page 115. And then the next report, which is on page 110, is over the compliance of the major programs that we tested. We tested two major programs, the airport improvement fund and the coronavirus relief fund. We have one finding, and it's also on page 115. It goes over what the finding was. And on page 115, I'm not going to go through them, but I want to point out that we explain in detail what the finding is. We tell the city what we recommend to fix it. And then in the back of your packet, there is a little corrective action plan that the city has already put together to explain how they're going to correct it. So you can see how they answer our recommendations. And that is the audit report in a nutshell.
Oh, like 130 pages of it.
I know. It's very light reading.
Is all of your recommendations in this, on this page three of the letter, is that basically what you were saying boils down to these four things?
This is just general recommendations that we are going through, that we've seen, that we talked to management about.
Okay.
The main findings are action on page 115. And those are what we call significant deficiencies, things that the city needs to take action on.
Okay. So the recommendation for the second discrepancy, we recommend the city review its trial balance of the year end, ensure all adjustments have been made. Is that just like a function? Is that just like an accounting function, David? It's just, it just didn't happen this year? Is that kind of, because I mean, and I'm, I don't think we've ever had any issues with, like with our, with the way that we do that. I mean, for the three years that I've been receiving these, we haven't had that many discrepancies or mistakes, if you will.
This one has been in there for a while, and what supports that is this.
Yeah.
The amount of adjustments that we had to make. And a lot of that is because the city kind of does both. They're on cash basis, but you have to be audited on accrual basis. And so some of the adjustments just get missed. And so I think that one has actually been there for several years.
Okay. Do we feel like, I mean, we'll be able to continue how well we've been doing in the past now with our new finance director?
Yeah, I believe so.
I mean, I mean, she, she was here for a very long time, so she knows, she kind of had this down, and just wanting to make sure that this is a big deal, and I just, I don't know, to try to, we have asked questions and tried to.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be a period of transition, obviously. We can go from somebody who's been here for a while to somebody new. So I would, this maybe, that would be something well to work for, but the person that we hired, I mean, part of the reason we hired her is because we feel like she's qualified to do this. It's just going to be a matter of getting her up to speed and getting her in, and some of those things addressed, and so on and so forth. So I'm very confident in that.
Cool.
She's already in that for training in August, and trains at the 811, so.
Oh, nice, okay. That's all I have.
I mean, some of these things, like, for example, the airport significant deficiency, which they didn't go to the holding line of detail, but my understanding of that issue is it happened outside of the control, direct control of the state. While the project was underneath our purview, it had more to do with how the, our consultant was managing the project on our behalf, of course, wouldn't be wrong.
Right.
Or a personal, personal aspect, really. But I think there's some, some of that that we can look at in terms of how that's managed, but I wouldn't say that we were 100% at fault for that. So there's things that we'll look at and try to figure out what we can do differently in the future to prevent those things happening.
What was the problem with the library? You said, I heard you mention the library.
Yes, they have a budget violation of, I think it was 12,000. A budget violation of 12,180 up until the end of the year.
Does that mean they went over 12,000?
Yeah, that was accurate.
So we should have republished for them, but we didn't have.
See, why, I didn't hear the conversation you guys had.
We should have republished the library's budget. They went over by 12,000-ish, and so we should have republished in December of last year, and we didn't republish their budget. Now, I don't want.
That's some miscommunication, she.
Okay. So the, there's a corrective action plan, then, in the back. You said that the city's put together to address?
Yes, so.
The deficiencies in your, in your single audit.
Yeah, we have a single audit. We actually have to upload your report to the federal audit clearinghouse, which doesn't happen every year. It's only once in a audit. And they require this report to be done.
Why the Department of Transportation as well as Treasury?
The, so the Department of Treasury was the coronavirus ones. We audited two major programs to get our coverage. There's a certain criteria we have to meet when we do single audits, so we had to get, we had to audit so many programs to get that out, which required two programs. So we audited the airport improvement fund and the coronavirus relief fund.
Okay, so the DOT was there for you.
Yes, perhaps.
Do you all have any additional questions? Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Is there anyone here for public comment today? Seeing that there are none, we'll move on, excuse me, to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda is approval of the city commission minutes from July 19th, 2021, and special city commission minutes from March 24th, 2021, and July 19th, 2021. And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move this consent agenda is presented to be approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item in old business, authorization of the city's participation in a project to underground the overhead utilities within the 100 block of North Main Street. This was an item that we discussed at the last meeting. It got tabled until this meeting. Hence, the reason it's on old business, we had an opportunity to visit about it in our work session. So David, do you have any additional information for us?
So based on the discussion at the work session, staff had prepared a finance plan for the downtown utilities underground project. As important, we have $380,000 of expense, whether that's Evergy, a turnkey solution with Evergy, or City and Kind with, you know, two Evergy Cox communication. So based on that, the finance plan would be 150,000 from the economic development sales tax fund, $80,000 from the general fund, and then the remaining balance would come from the three primary funds of Vegas Street, water, and sewer funds. So those would be where our labor would be, would be paid for in the event that we do that. So based on that, the city is recommending that the commission approve participation in the project and not to exceed cost $380,000, and then we will determine where those funds come from based on that. But the finance plan is kind of as I outlined there, so if you have any questions, I'll take those.
We've had some pretty good, robust conversation about this between the last meeting, previous work session and the last meeting, and then another work session and tonight, an opportunity for that. So if there's any discussion to be had or a motion to be made, I would welcome that now.
I move to authorize the city to participate in the underground utility project at a not-to-exceed cost of $380,000, and authorize the use of up to 150,000 from the economic development sales tax fund, but the remaining project expenses to be paid from the fund balance of the general water and sewer funds at the city manager's discretion.
I'll second it. You have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
I got a question. If one of the ways that's being proposed would pay for this is economic development sales tax, yet over here, and these aren't my words, I'm quoting, "The project, while positive for the aesthetics of downtown El Dorado, will likely not increase property valuations or create a significant catalyst for new sales tax generation." How do we justify using economic development sales tax money?
Well, your, the use of the economic development sales tax dollars can be used for a variety of projects. There's no real set criteria, number one. And two, while that may be true, there's probably some intangible benefits that cannot be quantitatively analyzed. So the city will not, however, want to be clear, the city will not receive an increase in product taxes and/or sales taxes as a result of this project. So, so, you know, we talk about return on investment, there's not going to be a defined or measurable return on investment. Now, that's not to say that there won't be an enhanced quality of life, or there won't be a benefit to the downtown. It's just extremely difficult for me to break that down into dollar terms, in terms of what that will look like, right? So if we, if we spend $380,000, the businesses that are located in the LMI are going to go up 30%, sales taxes are going to go up 12%, for example. So bearing that in mind, I can't provide an economic return on your investment for those economic development dollars. With that said, though, there's nothing that currently, there's no policy that says that there has to be a return on investment, and in fact, prior uses of those dollars would demonstrate that there doesn't have to be any, any use, any return on investment from the city standpoint in order to justify those funds. So I guess I would just turn it over for debate and discussion in terms of whether those funds are appropriate or not. If not, the commission can authorize additional funds for other, other funds.
I'm just curious. One other thing, we just, we were talking about this street project that we were going to have on Main Street, and then we've also talked about stormwater down there, and we just touched on it real lightly, but I thought, I remembered saying that we should do, if we're going to do something about stormwater, we should do it before this street project. Does anybody remember that?
Yeah, I mean, I remember conversations.
And it was going to be approximately $1.2 million, so.
It's certainly close to that.
Originally, we had like 1.7, and then I was told that was probably high, and it was more like 1.2.
Right. When we get to that in the general, when we talk about that, you know, certainly David and I discuss it's a goal of potentially work with KOD that use their funds, you know, the federal government's top on infrastructure projects rolling out, there may be an opportunity for us to roll a bunch of different grant dollars into a bigger project that helps our water lines, stormwater, and gets us a fresh bill.
So possibly we could use this infrastructure money that they're arguing about in DC, possibly to do this stormwater project?
Possibly, yeah, possibly.
Because my point was going to be, $380,000, that's almost a third of that stormwater project, if it's 1.2 million.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think that in, in the report we got from David about the, some of the our funds, COVID funds, our funds, whatever they are, I think that it's looking positive that, that storm sewer, stormwater, and water are going to, that type of infrastructure potentially falls under that type of, under the guidelines for those funds as well, to be able to use some of that grant money.
Right. And then Congress is currently debating a $1 trillion infrastructure bill that would include monies for streets and water lines and sewer lines and, like, all the infrastructure. If that's approved and gets through Congress, you know, there will be, that will be distributed presumably to the states, much as they've done in other similar broad type, type programs, and then those monies will be competitive. So if there's something that says that the city will, will receive a, a hard and fast dollar amount. So, you know, when that comes up, we'll definitely compete for those dollars for projects that we, we need for our community. So, yeah, that would be, those are possible funding sources, obviously. Tonight on that item, though, we're, we're, yes, we want the project, we want the funds. The streets are, are in bad shape, we know that, and we want to use this to leverage and discuss additional funds. I've been comparing stormwater or how we can work that out.
I just didn't want to see us get that street money, and then we can't afford to do the stormwater. That's what I, that's what I was thinking. So.
I appreciate that. Ken, do you have anything? Matt, great. Thank you, Nick. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-2. Now we move on to public hearings, excuse me, agenda item number nine. We will hold a public hearing to consider comments regarding the closeout of COVID community development block grants. So I need to open the public hearing. David, can you give us an update as to where we're at with this?
Yeah, so the city, as part of the COVID funds that were going around in 2020, 19, 2020, we received a community development block grant allocation from the city of Kansas. And there were specific requirements for these grants to be distributed to small businesses with the intent of saving jobs, and they had to meet certain criteria for that. The city was able to disperse those funds to 14 local businesses here in town for the purposes of a COVID-19 recovery. It is estimated that through that process, the city retained about 61 jobs, and those are, those are members who get, and were part of this. So as part of the CDVG process, the city commission is required to hold a public hearing associated with the closure of the ordinance. It's kind of weird how they set this up because it's kind of after the funds have been spent, so I don't really know what the hearing's supposed to be about. But if there's folks within the public that would like to come make comments about that, the city does have a small amount of funds still available, about 5,000, nope, we don't.
We're not.
We're ahead. I was just going to say, we have not spent about $5,000, but we do have to send that back based upon the deadline.
Which didn't, we didn't ask for the drawdown?
Yeah, because we didn't have enough interest in, in its, so, and, so we have to have a public hearing, and in essence, after that, we will close out the project, and then that's basically it, so.
So we did disperse roughly $115,000 across those businesses?
That's correct.
Well, we sent money back, did I hear you correctly?
Approximately at the time they were launched.
That didn't get requested.
Wow.
Sweet. The requirements for the grant were for small businesses, and the income requirements were pretty strict. They had to be within the LMI. And so we did, last week, we talked about Lily's. Aside from the fact that maybe their business was okay because they were doing the drive-thru thing, they have several waitresses, waiters that work for them that are maybe still living at home, and so their parents' income happened against that application. And we have several places like that in town, so that didn't help those businesses.
So is there anyone here to comment during the public hearing?
Now they all left.
They're gone.
Yeah, they got what they wanted.
Okay, well, I will close the public hearing, and entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute all documents related to the closure of the community development block grant 20-CV-080.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? It was a lot of things to sign, for the record. Thought I might be buying a house. I had to look carefully to make sure Tabitha wasn't making me.
Listen, you want the big seat, you got to sign this stuff.
Yeah, I guess so. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Now on to new business. Approval, agenda item number 10, approval of change order number two with AIPAC Kansas Inc. in the amount of $108,841 for the addition of Pine Street from Washington, Washington to Taylor and Third Avenue from Orchard to Oil Hill in the 2021 Millon Overlay Program.
Yes, so this project would be funded from the street sales tax dollars. We had a real favorable bid when we looked at doing the trafficway this year, so we have added, or are requesting your approval to add additional work to that contract. So this would be the repaving of Pine Street, Washington to Taylor, and then Third Avenue, Orchard, Oil Hill.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize change order number two with AIPAC Kansas on project number 582.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 11, authorization to participate in city connecting link improvement program, project with the Kansas Department of Transportation.
Yes, so what we're asking tonight is authorize the mayor to sign and submit a form to KOD requesting programming for this project. What we as staff would like to do is combine this project, which is the Millon Overlay of Main Street from Central South to our South City Limits, so right under the, under the railroad overpass to the bridge. That's a limits for this project. Last year, we were awarded Central Avenue from Griffith to Taylor. Intoxicate KOD. We were very aware that these projects could be combined, that there's a high likelihood that we would get this South Main project. So they are on board totally with us combining it, and that's what this form will do. We will have until their fiscal year 2023 to get the projects programmed. Definitely have started communication with them about that they're aware of our underground infrastructure, stormwater, we've applied for those projects in the past. Hopeful that some federal funds will be passed down to KODs. We feel with Millon Overlays and the studies that we've done on the drainage downtown, that it, it helps us. It's definitely what helped us last time when the American Recovery or Reinvestment Act, those ones came out, we were in the cusp of discussing Act, those ones came out, we were in the cusp of discussing Boyer and Sixth Street, and we were ready to go. So we were fortunate in that. Hopefully, if people are talking to them and discussing with them, we can put ourselves in a good position to see not only the roads improved, which are really pretty rough state right now today. We've gone a number of years without getting state funding for the mill and overlay. The city of El Dorado maintains about 33 lane miles of the state highway system within our city limits. So, high volume, lots of traffic, heavy loads, and anytime we can use those state dollars to help, because definitely our $500,000 sales tax dollars don't go very far when you think of the extents of these two projects, and the project cost is in excess of $650,000.
So this is, tonight is just an opportu, just the approval to get interested in the program for further, further discussion.
We got the award letter, and then this is saying, yes, program, the project, the city of El Dorado has $57,000, which is our, our portion of project available to spend on this project.
So this, the $650,000, that's both projects?
Of course.
Okay. So our portion would be that, so we're, we're taking 67,000 out of the half million that we got and put it in that, okay. So we have these projects and we've been awarded the money for them.
Correct.
You ready?
I'm ready for a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign and submit KDOT Form 1302 for the preservation project of South Main from South City Limits to Central Avenue and Central Avenue from Taylor Street to Griffith Street.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number 12, Authorization to Donate Certain Real Property to the Land Bank of the City of El Dorado, Kansas.
So the city owns 10.34 acres of land located on Garcia Court West, yes, west of the Pine Boulevard, so right behind Pine Boulevard. What we'd like to do is donate this tract to the land bank, and then by doing so, the property in essence would have all the rights and privileges of being a land bank. Most notably, while it's in the land bank, it will be taxed, which presently owned by the city, it's not taxed either. However, we have a developer who has purchased the, leasing the property for the potential for the purpose of building a spec building. City does have a spec building policy, however, because of the size of the building, an IRB will not, doesn't really pencil out, so the way that this would work is the city would own the property, the land in the realist, in the, in the land bank, and then we would enter into an agreement with this developer, we build a building. During the duration of the time when the building is empty, it will be in the land bank. Once the developer finds a tenant, then we would sell the property to the, the developer, and then they would then presumably begin to pay property taxes, or at that point in time, get an IRB or whatever other incentive may be appropriate at that time. So this gives us an ability to do that, particularly for small projects where the incentives that we have in place don't really allow for that, because an IRB requires usually a minimum of about a million dollars, so if you're building a small building, this wouldn't necessarily pencil out in terms of the amount of investment that you would have to make this happen. So that's why we had come up with this proposal. Incidentally, it's, one of the reasons why land banks were created is to create opportunities for land that hasn't, hasn't developed due to one reason or another, so that's what we have proposed. For this purpose, for the purpose of this item, the city would only donate the land to the land bank, and then any agreement would take place at a future date as part of a land bank agenda. We've got an agreement that's not finalized yet, so it's not on this agenda. So if I don't have any questions?
Why isn't this property already in the land bank?
The city has a number of properties that we just haven't transferred all of the city's property into the land bank. All the property, for example, in Business Park, most of those, I think none of them actually are in this, no land bank, and probably the biggest reason the city had to have surveys for each individual property, and we just kind of created the land bank, and so it's relatively new, and so we just have to take it and start with that process. I would suspect that most of the properties that we have that have economic development potential will subsequently in the future be donated to the land bank for, for these kind of purposes.
Okay, I was just trying, I know what to do, I'm just trying to understand the, you know, if we're doing it for like this purpose as in a speculation building, or if we're going to keep everything else out, I'm just trying to understand the.
Yeah, I think the intent is to shift everything that way, and we just have to come.
It usually happened this year, so I understand, okay.
It does present a good opportunity for that, for that spec building, that developer to be able to do this, I mean, I think as we move through this, if there's more opportunities to, to move some of those pieces into the land bank, you guys will bring them to us, but I, I get the question for sure.
Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the conveyance of a tract of real property in the North Industrial Park as presented by the city manager and legally described in the warrant deed to the land bank of City of El Dorado, Kansas.
Second. Motion and second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number 13, Approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Trec Design Group for the purposes of providing sanitary sewer flow monitoring at a not-to-exceed cost of $69,000.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, what this is, is part of our sewer master plan, and what we have worked on was Trec, is to go out into our sewer collection system and place flow monitors, and what these will do, over, over a specific 60-day period, will monitor velocity, the level of sewage that's flowing through the manhole. There is no real way to understand that in a system, it's not like a water system where you have meters around town or points, I mean, it's just all gravity pretty much. We get a little idea from our lift stations, but the majority of our sewer system is gravity, so what these devices will do, will measure those things that are mentioned prior, and really help to model where our system is being overwhelmed, where we have excess capacity, where we need to plan future projects to deal with infiltration and inflow, ground water or surface water. As we've talked in the past, our normal just dry weather flow, the way, so our treatment point is about 1.9 million gallons of sewage influent per day during heavy weather, wet weather periods, it can go up as high as 1 million gallons a day. So, you know, the other evening, we discussed, you saw the power, what the energy bill is of sewer plant, a lot of that, and you get those big flows off-sides, so it's another effort to reduce those costs, because there's no sense in us treating groundwater or surface water. So this will help us identify basins within the town, where we can start spending future dollars to line pipes, increase pipe sizes, and get us set up for expansion and growth.
And that's a big jump from 1.0, you know, from a million, I'm just under 2 million gallons to 12.
We've been hearing about here now for four years now.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Dead side.
And they're only going to do, they only monitor for 60 days.
With another 30-day period that we can add on if we don't. Part of this, there'll be rain gauges placed around the community, and these are the type of rain gauges that not only measure how many inches of rain you get, but how intense a rain is, how quick it comes down, so that'll correlate with the model.
What happens if it doesn't rain in this?
That's why, that's why we had the other.
I'm saying we should do this in May.
Right. And when are they going to start? I mean, when will this take effect?
ASAP.
Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Trec Design Group LLC to conduct flow monitoring of our sanitary sewer system.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number 14, Authorization to Proceed with Preliminary Engineering of Public Infrastructure for the Deer Run Addition.
So before we do that, it will be three items, and they are three resolutions for your consideration, and it is the public infrastructure authorizing those improvements for the Deer Run Addition, which is on the west side of El Dorado, just off Boyer Road and south of Third Avenue. First resolution you'll be looking at is looking at streets. Total project cost estimated for the paving of the street out there is $424,329.17. Of that amount, the city at large contribution is $76,279.17, with the remaining cost being borne by improvement district, which includes just the 13 lots that are part of the Deer Run Addition. The second you will see is the sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer is estimated cost $132,756, all of that which would be borne by the development of those 13 lots. And then we have the estimated cost of the water lines extension to serve Deer Run is estimated at $239,480.33. Included in your package are the site conditions from the developer.
So the, these costs are spread over those 13 properties?
Even the water?
The water is, is going to be paid by the city of El Dorado.
Right.
Right, well, yeah.
Okay.
So the city of El Dorado will be responsible for the water, and I believe it was $76,000.
$76,000.
So we have three motions in front of us, each of them independently authorizing each part of this project. Do I have any motions?
I move the Resolution Number 2827, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, sanitary sewer improvements, Deer Run Addition, and authorize the city manager to sign and authorize documents required of the improvement.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any further discussion on this one? Do we need to vote on each of these, or?
I think so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next.
I move the Resolution Number 2828, a resolution determining the advisability of the makings of certain internal improvements in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, paving improvements, Deer Run Addition, and authorize the city manager to sign and authorize documents required of the improvement.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries 5-0. Finally.
I move the Resolution Number 2829, a resolution of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, authorizing improvements to the city public water supply system and providing for the payment of the costs thereof.
Second.
Motion and a second there, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. 5-0. Trying to get back to the top of my agenda. So that's, that's all for new business, and there's nothing listed for discussion items, so we'll move on to reports, city commission and advisory board updates. Commissioner Guthrie.
So I've got a few things here. I'm look, I'd like to have a update on the sidewalk to nowhere, and wow, that's coming. The sidewalk down the river, that's been trying to be going for four years, but down by the railroad tracks.
And we are still awaiting BNS.
Good. The reason I ask that is because it's already being used, and I do believe that there are some people sheltering down in that area. I, I was down, dumping some limbs, gentleman walking down in there, and I went to the other, walked down into that path around the railroad tracks going towards the spillway, and I turned around, and I went to Riverside Park and waited for him to come out, and he never came out, I sat there for about 30 minutes and he never came out, so I hate that project, but it looks like nothing's been done on it since, because this was at the beginning of my term. I think we all received an email about the house on South Ellet. Believe that's the same gentleman that was over there by the barbecue, by Hogwild, that we were going to pull his, pull his special use permit. This is, that is the third complaint that we've received as a group about this, and I want to see if, is Sarah working on this gentleman, on this particular case?
I, I got into this.
Okay, so I'll.
I, uh, talked to Jay Shivers over in engineering, and as soon as I mentioned the address, he just chuckled at me. I'm like, okay. So he sent me over to talk to Sarah, and she just happened to be in. He had a court date today.
Oh, okay, okay, so where?
This is the second, right? Yeah, he had a court date earlier, decided he wanted an attorney, and so today was his court date. The petition that was mentioned in the email has been forwarded to the proper lawyer and whatever, so Jay and Sarah are hoping that something happens today.
Awesome, okay, I just, it was, it was just on my list of things.
It is the same, it's the same, it's the same guy.
Yeah. So I had, I had a phone call from a friend of mine who talked about he had bought, he purchased a RV, a trailer, and he had it on one of his properties in town, and he had it hooked up to the building. Sarah sent him a letter and told him that he needs to unhook everything, that it's not allowed, and I guess why I'm, I, I'm sure that, you know, the, this particular individual was doing something that was uncouth, and she, she had a reason to do it. Where my question is, is that, what is the standard for having an RV and like, like in my driveway? And hooking it up to the power and water and whatnot, to test out and whatnot? Is, what are the standards to that? And have, is that, do we have a standard?
So with, without having it written for me, this is what I recall. First off, you aren't allowed to camp within the city limits. An RV needs to be behind the front yard, parked on pavement.
Good.
You can use an RV for temporary living conditions for up to six months if you're remodeling a home or doing some other work.
Right. Okay, and it's, it's kind of what I, I remember the last time we had this conversation, but I wanted, I just wanted to verify that, that, because basically it was, the only thing that he, he wasn't, he was missing was that it was a, a pad, it's really the hard surface. But it was a very intense and upset phone call, and I told him that I would ask the question, so. CTC met, 150th celebration is September 11th downtown. I was asked to put out a call, they need volunteers for that, for that day. There's a car show going on, we have the concert downtown, there's a lot of things going that particular day, and Javin has really, really put a lot of work into that, that project, and I'm, I'm really excited for what the outcome's going to be, but we're going to need volunteers, and so I would, I hope that groups and individuals are looking for something. something to do, this would be an excellent opportunity to, to volunteer for your town and to help put on a great event. September 28th and 29th, or August 28th and 29th, the jet ski races have been approved by the state, and will be happening. They're talking up to 150, or over 150 riders that will be here, and each rider brings at least two to three people with them. So it's a lot of heads in beds, that's a lot of people in town. So really excited for that. We could probably use some volunteers for that event also, so any groups that want to even sponsor, I think that there, we're, Javin and I have put an awful lot of energy into trying to get that event going, and it's been a tad bit rough, but I think we finally got through all the, all the, all the trees and got to the point where we're, we're all on the same page and moving forward, so I look forward to that. And volunteers, complaint, RV sidewalk. That's all I got.
So, quick question, Matt, I guess for the.
The cameras.
The cam, the millions watching at home, if we have people interested in volunteering for the 150th or for any of these things that are upcoming, they need to contact Javin at City Hall. So they can call 3216-3219100.
Extension 126.
Extension 126.
And if you can't remember Javin, just ask to volunteer for the event, and I'm sure that the ladies up front will.
Get to the right spot.
Get her back to Javin.
So, yeah, it's great, great opportunities for some community service and to get involved. I'm really looking forward to those, both, all those events that are coming up, and Javin's, as have you at the jet ski stuff, but I know that Javin's putting in a ton of work, and it's, it's making great things happen, so.
I agree. So, and it's commending, commendation to both you and Tabitha for bringing him in and recognizing his talent, because he's been, he looks like, he's really been a good addition to your staff, so.
Yeah, the other thing that we'll do is we'll create a volunteer guide or list, or, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but it's easy to ask volunteers, but what does that mean? What do you need help with? So we're going to list out, like, what are all the things we need, because, you know, there might be people that are reluctant to volunteer just because they don't want to just volunteer, be there for 12 hours, and, you know, so we'll, we'll create some information for that as well, so there's some guidance.
Looking forward to it. This is a good, a good infrastructure to build for bigger festivals.
Absolutely.
Like how Prairie Port and Frontier Western, that, that network of volunteers needs to be built, especially with the younger people in town too, because I think that's the reason why we've lost some of these festivals, is just not having the younger volunteer group, so.
I do concur.
Greg, Commissioner Lewis.
That, that white two-story house on Central, it's white and it's purple, and it's got a for sale sign in front of it.
Like the 1100 block?
Yeah, it's got red tags on it. Is that habitable? Because there's been people going in and out of there.
Well, I'll have to give that to you. Give you some information if you have to.
There's red tags on it.
I think it is.
Sometimes the red tags might be a different type of violation than just strictly saying, hey, it's uninhabitable.
Yeah, I didn't know how to answer the question, because they said there was people going in and out of there that thought they shouldn't be there, so.
I've, I've been told that it's inhabitable. That's what I've been told by other people.
Yeah, the front door's standing wide open. And that's been, oh, yeah, the K254 meeting, when is that? Is it this week sometime, is it?
We haven't had one in a while.
It's going to be in Keachaw, but I can't remember what day it's supposed to be.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Badger.
No, I don't have it.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Parks and Rec met last Thursday. Summer baseball, softball is over. The pool is closed, but the splash park is open until September 6th or 8th.
You said the day after Labor Day?
Day after Labor Day.
September 11th.
We discussed how baseball, softball went. There was some discussion with, in the advisory board that there is an issue with people breeding dogs. And the fear that even though they may be the friendliest dog ever bred, it can still bite, if agitated, or scared, or whatever, which sounds like a liability. So, the advisory committee told Kevin to go ahead and look into, you know, what he thought needed to be done as far as the issue of, of, they're onalicious, he will admit they are onalicious, but the number continues to grow year after year, and he feels that we probably need to address that. The pool had a daily attendance of about 126 swimmers, which is not bad. The most challenging day, for some reason, was always Wednesdays. It's as if everybody got together and said, let's go swimming and see what kind of trouble we can cause. And so they had some troubles on Wednesday, otherwise, okay. This fall, we have, the city's doing flag football at the lake, soccer at the lake, volleyball at the rec center, and registration is due August 6th, which again is the day after Labor Day. Still having.
August 6th.
I'm sorry, August 6th. That's a month before Labor Day.
That's this.
Okay, August 6th.
Friday.
Friday, okay. New business, still having vandalism at, in the restrooms, especially Summit Park. Again, it's just kind of like, you know, what do we do? What can we do? What works, what doesn't? It's very frustrating, Kevin and his crew, to always have to be dealing with the vandalism at the restrooms. River View Park, is that right, River View? Okay, getting new playground equipment. Graham Park will be getting some new equipment, and I think I already said the splash park is open until the day after Labor Day. The committee also approved a memorial bench. And we have one memorial bench, if you've seen it, it's the one that's made out of the recycled material, very heavy, not something one person's going to pick up and walk off with. So it's going to be like that, of course, with the plaque in memorial of and from, and...
Who's in the memorial of?
I'm looking.
Okay.
It's in memory of Manford and Anetta Moore by their daughter Bonnie Dahl.
I'm looking.
And I think that's it. But as a side note, Tyler Nielsen is on the rec board, and he was named the SRO of the Year for the State of Kansas.
Tyson.
Tyson. I think that is an awes- awesome honor for that young man. Bless his heart. Okay.
Did the pool close because it was scheduled to close, or there's a problem with it?
The pool doesn't close until the 8th.
Sunday.
Okay.
But it's scheduled because we run out of lifeguards, because they start closing.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I.
August 8th, and yeah.
So speaking of, thank you. Speaking of running out of lifeguards next week, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, just a reminder to everyone, school is starting up soon. Kids will be on the street in a different way, and, you know, we've got to enjoy kids out this summer playing and having fun, and now we'll need to make sure that we're watching for school zones and watching for students, kids, as they're going back to school, so I want to encourage everyone to keep an eye out. School zone lights this week are starting back up to get everyone back used to it, so it's a great time of year when kids get to go back to school. I know the parents that have had kids home all summer really enjoy this time of year getting to get the kids back to school as well. But looking forward to, to getting school rolling, so I would encourage everyone again to just be cautious as you're driving to, to, to work in the morning specifically and home from work in the afternoon, so. So that's really the update that I have, that what I wanted to mention tonight. We haven't had an FABC meeting since our last meeting. Oh, I will be, I will not be at the August 16th meeting, Greg, so you'll have to run with that. My daughter's moving day for her going back to college is that day, so.
Okay.
We'll be in Texas moving her back into school. She gets to go back to school as well, so I'm not, I'm not necessarily looking forward to that. So you'll be, we'll talk ahead of time if there's anything going on, but it seems like a pretty light agenda at this point, so. But it's all yours then. That's what I've got. City managers report.
All right, just a few things. Sales tax receipts for July continue the upward trend. We brought in $255,956 based on $25.5 million in retail sales occurring in May. Here to date, we brought in $1.72 million, which is 13% higher than the same period a year ago. So that's quite substantial.
Which was a record year. Which was a record year, too.
Yeah, we've had three consecutive record-breaking years. This is trying to be potentially fourth. We are looking at bringing in, we're projecting to bring in $2.89 million based on the last 12 trailing months. So, yeah, we've been doing pretty good with sales tax. We appreciate everyone shopping local, online sales also contribute to that from compensating use tax as well, so those dollars just keep bringing, coming in, and we can use this for excess tax projects and a variety of other, other things. We can report that we have received our first tranche for the, from the American Rescue Plan Act funds, so we've received about half of that money, I think this week, right? Or last week?
Right.
Yeah, so we, we've got our first tranche. We will be investing those funds in some pretty large interest-bearing CDs until we can figure, until we figure out what we're going to do with that, and by that I mean we can probably make a really much money, because interest rates are very low, so, but we'll, we'll put those monies aside, and the federal law did allow, does allow cities, whatever money we do make on interest, we get to keep, so, you know, the thousand dollars will, people will be able to bank that, do something fun with. But one thing that you can do if you're a person at home and you're interested in how these funds are spent, we do have a survey, you can fill it online, the city's website with some, just the general categories for how the funds can be spent, and if you participate in that survey, please do so by August 12th, and we'll take that data and we'll, we'll use that data to help craft a plan to be presented to the commission here before too long. So, again, go to the website, www.eeldokas.com, it should be right there, kind of on the main page for that. Tomorrow night is National Night Out, so Police Department will be hosting that event at East Park from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, so come on down for an evening of fun food, games, and prizes, if you want to get in the house.
Who's going to be in the dunk tank? Is there?
I don't think there's a dunk tank. The temperature deep fell below the safe dunk zone. I believe it was 82 degrees today, we don't want to have to act for me at risk, so we're very safe with that. However, I will be down there, I'll be just in a different capacity than the dunk tank. I don't think, the police department's going to be in other capacities as well, but I think the dunk tank was rated out or something, I don't know.
Is that what it is?
There's a pond down there, but you can stand up in it, so we'll be.
Like back in Salem. Are you a witch?
No, we're going to just throw it in anyway, it's fine. Let's see, so today, August 2nd, the city's free chlorine disinfection started today, so if you do smell a little bit of chlorine, or you taste a little bit of chlorine in the water, it is not in your imagination. This is the annual chlorine disinfection month, so we'll be doing this through August 31st. KDC recommends this type of treatment to ensure the highest quality in water, even though we don't like it, we still do it because we should. The water is safe to drink, even though you have the chlorine odor and kind of the aftertaste, but it will be gone in a few weeks, so bear with us. As was mentioned, the 150th celebration is approaching, there's opportunities for volunteers, obviously, but if you're also interested in doing a parade exhibit, not a parade exhibit, but parade float or participating in parade, or if you're a vendor and you'd like to sell some wares, please stop by City Hall or the website, the entry forms, so we can get those included as well. So if you have any questions, call 3219100. And just a couple more things, we have this fun coloring book, I believe you have a copy, each of you, so we'll have this available, I think there'll be a couple kids events, or maybe just we'll have it, I don't know, we'll have it available for kids to pick up. It's just a fun coloring book, it talks about a couple, several different historical things involving El Dorado, and gives opportunities for coloring. There's a bird search, so if you're a kid, you can also color the flag as well, so that's kind of fun. This coloring book was actually produced, the, the drawings were driven, drawn up, illustrated by Julie Clementson's husband, he's actually, she's actually our musical information officer, and I guess he's illustrated some books, so we kind of worked with him and created this fun, fun coloring book. So, so that is, that's a good one. Then, coming soon to downtown near you, we're very proud, we're going to have this up by September 10th for the 150th, so we have these fun, which are down, so it wasn't too good, should practice. We have these banners that utilize, are a new brand, they've got welcome, you know, obviously, we want to welcome people to El Dorado, but they've got the mark, or I think it's called the, what's it called?
Stamp.
Stamp, or something like that. It's meant to be, if you've climbed the mountains, it kind of resembles in some parts the, the point that the GPS puts at the top of the mountains, and like, kind of looks like this, and in the middle it's got elevation, but we didn't do it. So we got that, and the bottom we've got El Dorado, Kansas, which is our new font, so you'll be seeing these on the Sternbergs, Sternberg pools in downtown, coming soon. So we're getting, these are orders, they're actually on hand, and we're snubbing brackets, so once those are up, we'll get those up and installed, so we can be pretty sure for our 150th. I think that's all I had, so if you have any questions on tickets.
Any questions for David?
No.
Consider a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
David. Can I have that?